Well, good morning, Mr. Manager.
Good morning.
We are about ready to start here. Commissioner Oden and I got our little bald heads sunburned a little bit yesterday. Out with two groundbreakings, but it was a great day, having two major economic development activities happen in our county on the same day.
It was a great day.
But Richard got his little bald head at the golf tournament.
Oh, that's why he missed us out there.
I was working, not playing.
What do you have for us this morning?
All right, Commissioner, we've got two topics of discussion today. First one, we're going to kick off with talking about the auction of the Greyhound Park. And then the second, we're going to talk, Lindsey's going to brief a little bit about the price of government in response to many questions from the many meetings. She's going to explain that chart and allow you to ask questions. But first, I'll start with Tanya, and she'll introduce Jeff and the crew.
Morning Commissioners, I'd like to introduce Mr. Jeff Lang, Mr. Don Buford, and Mr. Jeff Lawrence, who are here with Lang Real Estate. They're here this morning to provide you with an update on the Greyhound Park auction, marketing strategy, and timeline for the sale.
Thank you. Morning, sir.
Good morning, everyone. Appreciate you all having us here today to visit about things. I'll make a clarification, that's actually Don Buford, not Don Buford.
Okay.
Okay. Just want to make sure we understand that. So, appreciate the opportunity to take this project on here for the county. Appreciate the trust that you've put in us to take care of something with the taxpayers' dollars. We know the challenges in selling properties here from a government institution, and we certainly respect each of those things. We feel like we'll show you that we can do a quite professional job and do things well for you and manage the process very effectively. So, wanted to go through a few different highlights here. I'll look at my notes. Obviously, what we are selling is a commercially leased property. We've even thought about just exactly how to label the property, how to discuss the property, so that we do that process right. In addition to three of the tracts, here as you see on the screen, being leased, there are two tracts of land that are not leased. So, we have a commercially leased property, and then we also have transitional land. And so, we are going to offer this then in two different parcels, because they're two different, entirely different types of property, types of real estate. And that also means that we could have two different types of buyers that come to the auction. So, we will be marketing according to those types of buyers. We'll be getting out a national reach to investors on the commercially leased type of property. And then, we'll be approaching more the investment and the development type buyer with the property that's along 35 there and the transitional land. Obviously, one thing we just want to make you aware of, the December '22 new floodplain maps weren't real kind to that particular property. There's more floodplain there now than there was, but we'll certainly have that information, go through that with buyers, and make everyone well-informed. But that's what we are selling, just to go through all of that to the marketing strategy. We will be breaking that down to local press here, certainly the publications that you're all aware of. We'll be using different media sources. We'll also stretch the dollars so that we use some free bonus marketing, if you will, and communications with different media and tell that message. We certainly have recognized the opportunity in doing that with certain properties and getting that message out there properly, I think, and cost-effectively is certainly something that we should be doing. You can mark on your calendars that the date that we've set is July 17 at noon, and appropriately, it'll be held at a county property, the fire station right there on 77th Street. That seems like a very logical process here on where to have the auction, where we can accommodate people. Again, the significant property here is leased, so we want to respect that tenant and have the auction close but not right on the property and have plenty of parking and that sort of thing to take care of those needs. We do have, as we do with all of our property auctions, and when we sell a property, we always want to meet with the tenant first and just establish a relationship there. Tanya and the team, which incidentally has just been fantastic working with the county team here on this process, but they've set up, given us the contact information, and we followed through, and we have a meeting this Thursday with the tenant on the property. So, that'll be happening. That's kind of an overview. I don't want to take up a lot of your time, but certainly open for questions if there are questions then that you all might have.
Thank you. Commissioners, do you have any questions?
Just a comment, really, I think this is kind of exciting.
Absolutely.
I'm sure you do a great job, and so just appreciate you taking time to meet with us this morning.
Well, we really, as a lot of you have maybe seen, we're very much motivated to help the economy here in South Central Kansas, and Sedgwick County is certainly a significant driver of that. We really are ambassadors to bring business to town. We feel like this is an opportunity to tell that story. Anytime you can tell a story beyond the community, beyond the state, then take advantage of those opportunities, and that's certainly what we want to do here today. So, thank you.
Sure. Commissioner?
Yes, sir.
Is, you said you had meetings with the tenant. Do you have any meetings planned with some adjacent landowners that might have an interest? I mean, are you going to, like the people that own the Coliseum property, are you going to talk with them also?
Absolutely. I've got the meeting set up with them, and I'm glad that you brought that up, because that's another thing that we always do, is we don't want to take for granted that they know about it or they might hear about it. We want to meet with them and answer their questions. And so, that first meeting with the property owner to the north is set up and will be happening.
Okay.
That's a great question.
Well, I just, we've got to get the people there that are interested, so it looks like you're focused on that. And other commercial developers in the area, I'm sure you know all them, and you'll make sure they get a mailing, I suppose.
Absolutely, yes. We've done a lot of work with several of the folks there that are doing things in that area and have had previous meetings with them about other business opportunities. And now, we'll certainly be having individual meetings with them about this.
Okay.
We make a lot of phone calls. We offer to sit down and talk with the property and then answer those questions individually with folks. So, we definitely, we've always said that a buyer or individual that has questions is not a buyer. And so, we really approach everything from a standpoint of getting questions answered, and that way, we truly bring buyers to the table.
Are we, are we going to talk about our reserve yet?
Between now and then, yes.
Between now and the auction.
We will be offering this, subject to the seller confirming the sale. And so, that allows for that to take place.
Okay.
But that's not something we're going to state publicly, what our reserve is?
Oh, that's standard procedure?
We never do for an auction, no. That's between the seller and the auction company.
Okay.
Any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Lang. You're welcome to stay and learn about the price of government, or...
I might have a little bit of a suspicion, but I'm sure you guys are much deeper. Thank you for the invitation. Thank you all, we appreciate it.
Good morning, ladies.
If you'll give me just one moment here, I will get us ready to go. Okay, so, you might recall during Finance's budget review about a week and a half ago, we showed a slide that looked a lot like this, that basically showed what the price of government is and has been in Sedgwick County for quite some time. And so, there were several questions about what exactly is the price of government. There are also some questions about what does City of Wichita look like? Is there a threshold we should be striving to meet? And so, we're going to attempt to go through that today. At your seats, you should have this presentation, which should make it a little bit easier to see. I know these slides can be kind of small. And then, there'll be a couple handouts, and if I will ask you to just kind of bear with me and go through the presentation, we'll focus on the handouts separately here in a few minutes. So, what is the price of government? It's essentially an index that tells us over time how much our citizens are paying to support government services. And so, it's defined as the sum of all taxes, fees, and charges for service essentially that citizens pay. And then, we divide that number by our jurisdiction's economic resources. And so, I think it's important to focus on that portion about what the revenues are. We're not looking at intergovernmental revenues. We're not looking at money that another government gives us. We're not looking at grants, because that would be calculated in the entity that's giving us that money and their price of government. And so, we don't want to double count it. And so, if you look at this slide, how is the price of government calculated? This essentially shows you that it's those total non-governmental revenues divided by aggregate personal income. And so, in Sedgwick County in 2017, our revenues were just less than $218 million when we take into account, again, just those revenues that are generated from citizens themselves. And the personal income for all of Sedgwick County, and that is not just the money you get at your job, it's also any stocks, bonds, dividends you may receive, any type of revenue that's received by our citizens. In 2017, that was estimated at just more than $26 billion. So, we divide those, or we take that revenue number, divide it by the personal income, and then, we want to put it on the basis of a penny per dollar. So, we take it times 100. And what that shows us then is that in 2017, citizens were providing less than one penny per dollar of their personal income to support Sedgwick County services. So, why does it matter? Why do we care about this? It matters because it's a measure of the cost of county services. Obviously, that's important, not just to elected officials, but to the citizens. They need that number to be palatable to them. It addresses how much it actually takes for us then to turn around and provide that service in terms of real dollars from our community. So, again, excluding that non, or the governmental sources, the grant revenue, it's comprehensive. So, it gives us a clear picture. It puts it relative to some metrics that even over time, we should expect to track fairly closely with each other. As revenues to local government grow, certainly, we would expect that personal income in the community is growing. Otherwise, that might be telling a bad story, that government's growing faster than what our citizens can provide. And so, in that regard, it's a financial index. It's not intended to be a representation of our budget by any means, but it is supposed to tell us in terms of, relative to our citizens, what are they paying? And as we have learned, there's a lovely book out there, if you all want to read it, actually called The Price of Government. That's what this came from. And it talks about the different levels of the price of government, and that it truly does correlate to citizen satisfaction. The more citizens pay, the more frustrated they tend to get if they don't feel like they're getting the right level of service. On the flip side, if that metric goes down, then typically, there's some complaints from citizens that there is not an adequate level of service being provided. And so, to the extent that you can see on this chart that our price of government has gone down and been down about the same rate since the Great Recession, we do know that there's some pent-up demand for things like public safety services. You've heard from the sheriff, the DA, from 911, from Regional Forensic Science Center, that those services are going up, and there's a demand for increased support. And so, that could mean that we then need to invest more in our services. Looking at the price of government over time, I think this is absolutely fascinating, and you can think I'm the biggest nerd in the world, but if you look at 1977, personal income was about $2.8 billion. Total local revenue for Sedgwick County was about $26.5 million. And our price of government was about .95 pennies per dollar. So, again, still less than a penny per dollar of personal income. Now, let's jump forward and look at 1987. You can see that there was a 71 percent, or I'm sorry, a 138 percent increase in personal income and a 150 percent increase in total local revenue. And you can see that over time, those ratios are getting bigger and bigger until you get to the last 10 years, 2007 to 2017. While our personal income did grow, it didn't grow nearly as much. It grew 29 percent, whereas total local revenue declined. And I think that tells a fascinating story. You can see that overall, we have hovered around a penny per dollar. And again, that's why this has such value as an index, because it's helping us track that as local government revenues have increased, so has personal income. And in fact, over time, the price of government has decreased relative to the amount of personal income in the community. The other question that came up was the City of Wichita's price of government, and I will tell you that this is a lob. This is the best estimate. Here's what's fun about the federal government's data system. It gives you data for counties, and it gives you data for metropolitan statistical areas. Well, the Wichita MSA is actually five counties, Sedgwick, Sumner, Kingman, Butler, and Harvey. So, if we look at county data, we can get just straight Sedgwick County, but it is impossible, using the data that they provide, to get just City of Wichita. And I actually did reach out and confirm that with the Bureau of Economic Analysis. So, what this chart shows you is essentially the revenues that were reported by the City of Wichita's CAFR. The population figures that were used to calculate this information came from the State Department of Revenue for how they compute sales tax ratios and how much goes to which entities in the county versus cities. And then, in terms of personal income, essentially, the Census Bureau goes out and collects a per capita personal income number. So, basically, it says how much per person in your community. It provides that information for the City of Wichita, and it provides it for Sedgwick County. And one of the things I was interested to learn, and one of the handouts you'll see here in a moment, is that the City of Wichita's per capita income is actually less than Sedgwick County's. So, and that's something I think that Rick talked about during his last quarterly presentation. So, the City of Wichita, on average, has about $25,700 per person. Sedgwick County's is about $26,700. So, we are, or I'm sorry, the City of Wichita is about 96 percent rate relative to the average person in Sedgwick County. And so, we essentially backed into some data, looking at this. And what this chart shows you then is that while the county is at about a cent per dollar or less, the city has been historically at nearly two cents per dollar, and is right now around 1.5 cents per dollar. And so, that's significantly higher than what the county does, but they also have a much smaller population, but a similar-sized budget, because they do things like utilities. There's a lot more roadwork that they have to do for city infrastructure. And so, it makes sense when you stop and think about it in that regard, but it did surprise me to see that actually Sedgwick County on the whole has a higher personal income than on average in the city. So, does it really matter? Yes, it's an objective way of putting growing populations, personal income, and government services in context over time. We do know that there's a correlation between citizen satisfaction and how much they're paying for their services. The important caveat, though, is of course, it doesn't take into account what explanatory factors there might be going on in a community. And so, there's still some subjective analysis we have to look at, like the Great Recession and things like those. That wouldn't necessarily be clear on its face just by looking at the numbers involved. So, some of those influences, like I talk about, and I think we see it with the city, and I think we see it with Sedgwick County, and I think you'd see it as you went across the nation. We know that county commissioners can't control the demographics of our county. They can't control the socioeconomics of our community. You can't control what's happening with the labor market. It can certainly be influenced, but it's certainly something that's outside of your exclusive control. We know that as a county, our pension contributions are set by the state, and as those costs go up, we have to find a way to fund that in order to provide services. Utility costs, not just for us but for consumers, that's something beyond our control. And of course, when the state tells us we must do something, or the federal government tells us we must do something, we must respond, and it's on county commissioners to decide how to make that happen and balance the revenues coming in with the services that are being demanded by citizens. So, you do have some handouts, and this is where I hope it gets a little more interesting. You have one that looks like this. And what this is, is basically more detail than what you saw on that every 10-year increment. This is in 10-year increments. And so, these columns off to your far right are what were shown on that slide. But this gives you every year, the amount of personal income, the amount of total revenues, and the price of government. And again, when I talk about how we hover around one penny per dollar, this is what illustrates that rather than just about anything else. At one point, there was a question during the budget review about how much, if we wanted to get to just an even penny, what would that look like in terms of additional revenues we'd have to provide? So, looking at that 2017 revenue of $217,657,935, to get to one penny, we would need total revenues of about $260 million, which would be an additional 42 million, which would be equivalent to another nine mils. And so, after technical adjustment, the 2017 tax levy to support the 2018 budget was 29.393 mils. This would bring the new mill levy rate up to 38.453 mils, or a 31 percent increase. And so, it's not necessarily something that I would say we want to strive toward, but just to get toward that kind of historical average, that's what it would take, unless we could find charges for service or other revenue streams to increase that. And so, it's a pretty hefty number. Okay, now, it gets really interesting. You should have a map. So, our friends in GIS put together this information, and I'll pull it up on screen because I'm cheap and I didn't make a whole lot of copies. And so, what this chart shows is the lighter the color, the lighter yellow, for example, the lower the per capita personal income. So, again, this is average personal income per person living in a home or paying taxes on a property in that area. And so, what this shows you is probably what you would expect to see, but in our core, in downtown City of Wichita, there's a lot of light yellow. As you spread out into the county, it turns into darker shades of brown, orange and brown. The darker the color, the higher the personal income for that community. And I thought this was really eye-opening. It was surprising for me to see this. But this certainly explains why the City of Wichita's price of government is different from what you might expect for Sedgwick County. So, that same data is then shown on the next map, and this puts it in terms of, because of the conversations lately, fire services. Who's providing service to a particular area, and what does the personal income in that community look like? And so, let me open that real quick. And so, here you can see these dotted blue lines that you see basically say that another fire district is providing that service. If you're not seeing blue dots, that tells you that Sedgwick County is providing service in that area. And you can see little pockets throughout, particularly as you get over into the western part of the county, where there are small pockets where the fire district is providing service, even though areas all around it are receiving service from someone else. And so, when we talk about revenues for the fire district and which entities we want to annex on, or what the potential impact is if they annex to another city, I think this is very telling and a pretty useful map just to have on hand. And so, this is based on 2016 per capita personal income. It's something that our GIS folks keep on hand, and so, we can update this and discuss more if necessary. So, that's my presentation. Hopefully, the last part was a little interesting, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Questions? Commissioner Oden?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just so back to the price of government on Slide 3, that'd be Slide 3, but those numbers, does that include the dollars for the fire district, or is that excluded from that calculation?
No, this is Sedgwick County only.
Okay. So, going a little bit further, if a dollar, if I'm sorry, if one and a half cents was accurate, and I'm not saying it is, but if that was correct for Wichita, then if you added Sedgwick County and Wichita together, someone would be paying about two and a half cents roughly. Okay.
If they live in City of Wichita limits.
And of course, people in the county are also paying other taxes, like townships and fire district and other things.
They could be.
Potentially. And then, of course, every other city has additional taxes, like Derby and every city around the county has more taxes. So, this doesn't present, I mean, the idea that you're living in the county and your taxes are lower is probably generally true, but there are other taxes that must be considered for that to be fully understood, and this isn't presenting the full picture, I guess, so.
Could be.
All right. Well, anyway, it's a great presentation. Thank you very much.
Commissioner Oden?
Lindsey, on the revenue side of the calculation, you said that included mill levy revenues and?
Charges for service or sales taxes, pretty much anything that is not from another government is included in this number for the Sedgwick County side. It's not just property taxes. So, it could be solid waste fee, anything like that would be included as a part of this revenue.
You said interest revenues and stuff like that.
Yes, sir.
I'm trying to find the logic of including those in that calculation. I mean, why wouldn't you just do it on the basis of our mill levy?
In general, it's because it's every dollar that a person is having to pay for a service within the community is what we want to take into account. So, that's more than just property taxes. If you're coming in to the county clerk's office to get some kind of license and you're paying that fee, or if you're paying, you're buying a home and paying mortgage registration, that's a dollar you're paying to support government services. And so, the concept is that ought to then be included in that entity's price of government.
Okay. And you said to get to, if, as an example, to get to one cent per dollar, our revenues would have to increase by?
$42 million.
Okay. I didn't hear right this. I agree with you. Okay, thank you.
Sure.
But it's not our goal by any means.
No.
I want to make sure everybody...
Not saying we're striving to do that. Just, the question was what would that take?
Just a discussion of how the numbers work.
Other questions? Lindsey, thank you.
Thanks.
That's it?
That's it? All right.
Wait, I have one. Do you know, just relative, what do the other urban counties, their cost?
I'm sorry?
Did you, do we know what the other urban counties are, their cost?
I don't, but I can find that out for you pretty easily. I'll be happy to send around an email.
Well, if it's easy, it'd be interesting, but it's a lot of work, I don't know what happens.
No, it, unless you want me to go back to 1972, it shouldn't be a lot of work.
No, no. I don't want to do that. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. All right. Commissioner Oden, do you have anything? Commissioner?
I don't.
Mr. O'Donnell?
I have one, I have one question. So, I was thinking about the Northeast Plugs since last week's discussion, and I went online to try to find information about it. It's not anywhere on our website. Can't find even where it's located, anything about it whatsoever. So, I think we ought to add that to our website so people can learn about where it's located and information about that park that needs to be.
There is some information, there should be some information on the Seton Park page, but we can certainly add.
I looked very, very hard, and I even Googled. All I came up with was news stories from about the decisions about that, making that park, so to speak, but I couldn't find anything even on the Sedgwick County website. So, if I'm missing it, that's fine, but...
So, if I'm missing it, that's fine, but we ought to encourage people at least to use the park that's out there, I guess. Thank you.
I've talked to our folks. We're gonna get a traffic count. You were asking for that. There's just, Dr. Mark Schroth, just one entrance into it, which is fine. We did notice that the entrance is at a bad, bad location. It's right in the radius at the intersection, so it needs to be moved one way or the other. I mean, we don't have to do it now if there's not a lot of traffic, but it's not anything we put there, but it's not good. But, we'll get a count. We have, we're gonna have to drive a post into the ground to hook the counter to because there's nothing to hook to up there, so... But we'll get a count and get that back to you, see how many people...
Thank you.
And from the anecdotal comments of people that live up in there, most of the usage is by area residents who get on their horse and they ride over from their residence and ride in the park area. And depending on how the township grades that road, is, some people don't want to take their horse trailer down it when it gets real rough because it shakes their horses up. So, those are some of the factors involved in the usage.
I have a couple. First of all, commission meeting on June 20th, Commissioner Enru and I will both be out of town. We won't have a forum.
We're not going together.
We're not going together? We can slide it a week, we can do whatever we need to, but we just need to be aware that we're not gonna have a forum that day.
Sorry, I might put it out that July 4th is a Wednesday this year, which means we won't have any back eighty hours. So, we might have one on this 27th.
Yeah, we can replace it, that's not a problem.
We'll come back to you with that date.
Good. Okay. I wanted to make sure that everybody saw the information. We have the oldest surviving member that was at Pearl Harbor arriving tomorrow at Yingling. He's gonna be there for two hours and then depart for Washington DC to participate in the Memorial Day activities. It's, he's 106 years old, so you might not have a chance to meet him again. I know that we have a meeting tomorrow. He's there from 11:00 to 1:00, but we have some very important things on the agenda tomorrow. But I just want everybody to bear that in mind, that if you want the opportunity to meet the oldest survivor of Pearl Harbor, that's probably one of the only chances you're gonna have. Also, Tim, we have an aging volunteer recognition luncheon today at the Extension Center. I want to make sure that everybody is aware of that. It's 11:15 from what I understand. So, make sure to come out and recognize our volunteers. And that's all I have. Does staff have anything this morning?
Don't forget, also tonight is the zoo annual meeting at the zoo.
It is a zoo annual meeting, and it's also celebrity chef cook-off at Intrust Bank Arena this evening, so we're fairly busy.
Can you send us those?
The electeds, you have anything? Nothing? Any of the other staff in the back? Hey, anything else for us? Very good. That's all I have. I guess we're adjourned.